Everybody ready? Okay. Ready to go? All right. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this November 22, 2022, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Let's begin with a moment of silent prayer and meditation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Becerra. Please rise.
Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Paulina, roll call, please.
Good evening, Commissioner Hing. Commissioner Williams.
President.
Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Here.
And Chair Lewis.
Here. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. We have no minutes to approve tonight, so we're going to move right into oral communications. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of the duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized items or consent calendar items. Do we have anyone who would like to speak during oral communications? No speaker cards? Okay, all right. Very well, we have no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move on to non-hearing items. Item number one, art in public places, number 22-01, 1115 South Sunset Avenue, eminent health, Queen of the Valley. We have a staff report, Paulina.
Yes, we do. And our planning manager, Joanne, will provide that presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had approved Precise Plan Number 20-04 on January 26, 2021, to allow the expansion of the Queen of the Valley Hospital campus, which included a parking structure, a medical office building, and an expansion to the hospital itself for the emergency department and ICU. The valuation of this project is $93 million. The arts in public, as part of the arts in precise plan approval, a condition of approval was included to require that the applicant comply with the arts in public places, which requires 1% of the valuation of the project to be contributed in either public art or in lieu of the providing its own artwork on campus. In this case, this is the first phase in the Queen of the Valley's Art in Public Places. And it consists of two separate artwork for the medical office building. One is the suspended sculpture, which would be located in the medical office building lobby and would be visible from the interior and also the exterior through the glass windows. The budget for the suspended sculpture is $145,625. And the sculpture would be made out of perforated aluminum mesh shaped like butterfly wings, powder coated in eminent health corporate colors with blue and orange tones. The artist for the suspended sculpture is Tally Fisher. And to the bottom, to the left and bottom of the slide are examples of her artwork, her suspended sculpture artwork that is currently in place in different parts of the country. The applicant is asking the Planning Commission for approval of the suspended sculpture concept that they had, that they are presenting. Because in order to open the medical office building, they would have to have the artwork in place. And the suspended sculpture takes a little bit more time to create and manufacture. The second part of the arts in public places for the medical office building is a mural. The mural, the concept for the mural is still under development. The applicant is, it will welcome any feedback or suggestions from the Planning Commission. The mural would be located on the blank wall along the west elevation of the medical office building. The artist for the mural is Nate Frizzle. And on the projector are examples of his artwork throughout, I believe, California and the United States. The budget for the mural is $89,400. Again, the requirement for the Arts in Public Places program is 1% of the total valuation of the project. The entire, the cost for the artwork for the entire project should be $930,000 for the medical office building, the total, which includes the sculpture. And the mural is at $235,025. The balance would be $694,975. The eminent will be coming back to the Planning Commission with other arts in public places application for review and approval of other artwork on the campus. With this, it is recommended the Planning Commission approve the concept and design for the suspended sculpture and provide feedback for the mural. The applicant is available at the audience and is welcoming any Planning Commission questions.
Do we have any discussion? Any questions for staff? Anyone?
I have one quick question with regard to the mural. Is there, with regard to any potential approval of the mural, do we get to see what the mural is going to look like before it's ultimately installed? And say yea or nay on it, or?
Yes, they, the applicant would be, once they develop the concept for the mural, the applicant will bring it back to the Planning Commission, or staff will bring it back to the Planning Commission for approval.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone?
I guess I have one. So this is just only two of the artworks. There may be more.
Yes.
That's on the ground level or what have you, but we just don't know that yet.
Yes. The applicant is here. He would be able to answer specific questions regarding the future artwork for the campus.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just add too, as in the report, the entire project is required to provide $930,000 towards an art in public places. So the two artworks that are being presented tonight constitute $235,025. So there will be a balance that they'll be required to provide artwork for.
That was my next question. So the total is $930,000.
Any other questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Yes.
Start with Commissioner Williams and then go to Vice Chair Gutierrez.
So you were looking for feedback concerning the mural?
Oh, regarding the mural, yes. The mural is still in development, and we will absolutely come back once it is further developed with renderings from the artist for your approval. I do have a question for you, though. Is it possible to show one of the examples of the artists of the mural on the slide, please? The mural will, the theme of the mural will be community and history of the area. And my question for the council is that, will it be provable to have artwork that is portraiture or figurative like this incorporated? In other words, different types of, you know, as I said, figurative people in there incorporating the art? I just want to make sure before we further develop that it would be, that would be okay.
I think everyone has their own recommendations, so.
I know that the city is going to be celebrating an important milestone for the city itself. Is it 75 years?
100 years.
Centennial, so 100.
Years, yes.
Kind of a special occasion for the city.
So, and I don't know, but I'm sure that there may have been a town photographer that may have captured some historical points in West Covina that perhaps might.
Quite a few, quite a few pictures, historical pictures.
So are you saying, are you suggesting that we come up with an option that possibly celebrates a centennial?
That would be nice. That might be a nice.
It used to be in Orange Grove.
Can we?
I think something that celebrates a centennial, but also I think this artist has like an effect to create some sort of inspiration or hope, possibly for patients who are maybe really ill in the hospital, especially with the new center, state-of-the-art center that you guys are developing. So my opinion will be that, yes, we somehow input the centennial of our city in there, but most importantly, we get some sort of effect of hope or inspiration that puts all that together.
If I, is there?
For example, the one on the right is very, it brings a message of hope.
Can I ask a question of one of you or Joanne? If we, to move forward with this concept, would it be possible to ask you for imagery that represents a centennial that we can bring to the artist to help us with the first, the renderings?
We can do our best to provide you with some type of imagery.
There's a lot of black and white pictures that you can actually look up that are available. There's, you know, this just says how long I've lived here. You know, do you remember? You guys probably don't. Woolworths over there, when it used to be bank, where the mall is right now, Westfield. So there was a lot of, Thrifties was there. I mean, there's, what I've seen, I've seen a lot of old pictures of what the city used to look like. You know, maybe city, what City Hall looked like back then. Or, you know, landmark pictures would be nice.
Also, some guidance would be helpful, too, is things that, there might be some very nice pictures there, but things that are of meaning to the city that we would not know as much as possibly.
I think, don't we have a historical society?
Yeah, I was gonna mention. The West Covina Historical Society might be an important starting point for that.
But also, we have to also keep in mind, though, I mean, it's 100 years, it's a huge milestone for West Covina. But we also have to keep in mind that we are putting a mirror that is also moving forward toward the future. So I'm not sure how we're going to incorporate what was past and present and what was going to be in the future. So I'm not sure how we're going to incorporate all that into one.
That's our job.
Yeah.
That's what I was about to say, the artist.
Like a point in time, maybe even, theme, whereas, you know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe some, I mean, some of the, what was, what used to be back, what was here back in the day? Orange Farm?
Well, see, if they had Orange Grove, they may have also had an orange labels and things that were unique to the city of West Covina or identifying.
Maybe we put some orange trees in there.
I would also just remind everyone, this is, there are probably going to be, what? Six, seven more pieces of art as part of this, so.
Yeah, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of landmarks in our city, too. So like City Hall or the Edwards Theater or Eastland Center. So we want to, I mean, it would be my opinion that you come back with a design that's as independent and non-political as possible that you bring it back. Because some of the, unfortunately, some of the community or groups out there are very political. So I will urge you to do your own homework and you find that history on your own when it comes to the actual specifics you put in there.
I've worked with several, with several different projects of mine. I've worked with several historical societies, and I find it actually very helpful.
Very helpful.
Very easy to work and very easy to work with.
But also, the pictures on the right, it does represent California with a California poppy, I believe. I mean, it looks like.
So actually having portraiture and people in there is okay to incorporate into the mural?
We, again, probably suggest that you do check with the historical society because they may have materials that would specifically identify West Covina.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Sure.
The, we're in a bit of a, the mural, we have some time for it because that's, you know, that's only, it's not take near as long as the suspended sculpture. We would like to get approval of concept for the suspended sculpture as soon as possible so the artist can get going with ordering materials and fabricating. And I was wondering if you need from us or anything else you need from me in order to get that approval?
No. Not myself.
All right, thank you.
So you want to be able to bring it back? So they have to bring it back, right?
No, they're trying to get approval this evening for the sculpture because it has to be fabricated. And so they're talking about doing the butterfly wing.
You wanted to see how it looked, right?
Right, that's. So my understanding, and I just want to make sure that a motion to approve the Arts in Public Places, number 22-01, would give approval for the suspended aerial sculpture and preliminary approval for a mural in that location, but the mural itself would be subject to a subsequent hearing on that particular piece?
Correct.
Is that, is that a fair statement, Mr. City?
I would describe it as direction regarding the mural, approval for the suspended sculpture.
Okay, all right.
And I want to, to further explain the phases. We call it basically three phases to fulfill the entire $930,000 requirement. Phase one is, are these two, the mural and the suspended sculpture, what they gave it the value of. Phase two will be exterior sculptures, which in several months, we'll be back to percent about that. Phase three will be a wall that we're going to incorporate artwork on in the emergency. So those are the three phases. And now we're just thinking of phase one. Of phase one, what we need of approval of most imminently or emanately is the suspended sculpture.
Right. And then since there's budget there, maybe in one of the concepts you come back with, it involves lighting. So those murals are not in the pure dark at night, and it's somehow they can be brightened up so that when the community is there, they can see it and see that history.
That would be, Tony? You know, if there's any plan for lighting out there or should we incorporate that in the artwork budget as well? For the exterior mural? Okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, beautiful, yeah. Okay, great.
I actually have a concern, though. This is, since it's durability and this is the mural, it's going to be painted. I mean, I mean, how often do you go and repaint the mural since it's hitting, you know, the sun is going to hit it and it does fade?
This artist is what we do, is exterior murals. And they do, I believe, if, I'm not sure if it's there or not, there is a, there is a overcoat they put on them. I'm not sure the exact terminology, but there is, that is taken into consideration because this mural is meant to last decades.
So it's just one artist that's completing the work?
The artist will be there. The artist, one artist, I mean, the artist will probably have assistants, but the concept and basically it is under one artist's name.
So we're providing the idea of the artwork and he's completing the actual piece?
Correct. Well, we work in conjunction with the artist going back and forth to develop the concept. And we will develop renderings and ideas in which case, after that's developed, then we come back and re-paint to you for approval.
I mean, I've seen, I think it's Toronto, they had a street alley called graffiti street or graffiti alley. And I noticed that the mirror on those buildings, the fresher one looks a lot nicer, which is the newer one. And then the older one, I'm not sure how long it has been, but it does look dated. So I guess my question is, I guess the artist, you mentioned decades, it lasts. Do we have pictures of their mirror that was done decades ago so they can kind of take a look and see how durable it's going to be? I mean, we don't want to.
So basically.
There's a maintenance covenant.
Yeah, so my understanding is that there's, after it's dried and the paints cure, there's a coating, a multiple layer coating that goes on there. So even if anyone graffiti's on there, it's able to be taken off.
That is true, that is true.
Yeah.
There is, there is a non, it is a non-graffiti. Not, yeah.
Yeah.
Words protected.
Yes, they do indicate in the report that there is a clearly spelled out conditions for maintenance. These are the art pieces.
All right, any other questions, anyone?
Thank you very much.
All right. Now entertain commission discussion. Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
I just want some clarification on the motion. Is that to approve the, both the mural and the?
Yeah, let me, I'll read it, sorry. Technical difficulties are here.
If I can clarify, if you'd like, Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yeah, can you clarify?
The motion is to approve the suspended sculpture. And then you guys provided direction on the mural this evening. So the applicant will go back and incorporate that into the design. But the approval is for the suspended sculpture.
Correct.
So.
Correct. And, and so, yeah, and then the murals, the concept is approved and then they'll come back and show us a sample of the proposed artwork for the mural, yeah. And then regards to the first sculpture, it's completely approved.
So I have a second, or first a motion and a second? Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
And Chair Lewis?
Aye. All right, moving on to commissioner reports and comments. Anyone with any comments or reports they want to?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. First, I want to say dank emmenti hout. Sorry, am I pronouncing it right? Emmon, eminent hout. Yes. And I just wanted to continue to commend your board and your organization for your continued investment in the city of West Covina. This is going to be a very beneficial hospital and one of the most state-of-the-art hospitals in the whole Sangiovese Valley. So thank you for your continued support in our community, so. And so, yeah, I would like to, I would like to ask staff to agenditize an item so the Planning Commission could consider recommending that the city council adopt a memoratorium to temporarily prohibit drive-through food establishments while the city is in the process of conducting a study and working on the development code update. With the recent approval of two drive-throughs near the freeway and the traffic that is existing, drive-throughs are causing additional, are causing a very concern for traffic. Additional drive-throughs will be a threat to the public safety and welfare and will cause a negative environmental impacts for the increase of greenhouse gas from idling vehicles. This is recommend, I'm asking that this be agenditized so that the planning commission can discuss this at the next commission meeting so we can hear from the public and the community and we could talk about it. I know this is going to be changed eventually as part of the development code. So I think it's important that we discuss this and see if there is a need to immediately enact this since there is more drive-throughs, two of them who are currently in construction, which will not affect their projects in no way possible. But because they're in the areas where could cause major traffic concerns and to make the city not liable or in issues of applicants submitting applications in between the time, then I think it's important for discussion. Because it's my understanding at the committee, at the, at the committee meeting, it was indicated that there's no current pending applicants, correct, for drive-throughs?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So I would like to ask that that be agenditized.
I'm trying to understand, which problems are you talking about and which drive-through are you talking about?
So at this, at the last committee, what's the appropriate title for the committee?
Development Code Update Subcommittee.
The Development Code Update Committee. Some of the concerns that were brought to the attention to the committee were about drive-throughs who are establishing themselves right next to a freeway, which will not affect their project. But there is belief that more drive-through applicants could be applying right next door to them, which can cause a traffic concern. And so currently, the consulting front of the city hired to update the code is currently researching that. And I think it's important that the commission be, it's brought to the commission so we can review it at that time and have a discussion to see if there is a need to act on this now or wait till it's eventually going to be adopted through the code update.
Don't technical studies already research that? And if it's a problem, they don't approve? Isn't that correct?
They can add to it, but right now, a drive-through has to go through the conditional use permit application process to get approved. But, so there is an added step. It's not a by right use in the city.
No, I, what I meant is like, you know, they can apply for it, but once it gets into the system, they also, you know, technical studies also make sure that it's not going to be a hazard like Chick-fil-A kind of is. So, I mean.
You mean the one on Vincent?
Right, so why would you put anything right next to it when it's already, you know? I'm just saying, wouldn't technical studies deny that already if it was going to be?
So, Commissioner, I just, it sounds like there is interest in discussing this. So the purpose of this particular item is to request it to be put on agenda as a future meeting. So these, these kind of questions and discussions can be answered. I just, I would recommend that we not engage in too much discussion right now, that we save that for the, when it gets put on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm asking is that we put it on agenda for discussion? So you're not saying yes or no on the purpose? It's just for, for we can have discussion on the matter, then I would like it agenditized. And so unless there's objection, then I believe there's no policy that will prohibit a commission member from asking it to be agenditized.
I guess after the COVID, I mean, drive-through is very popular, more so than ever. And everyone's just going to go pick up the food and go home. I'm not aware of any drive-through that has that huge of a problem. I guess, West Covina in general.
Yeah, I believe it's, my understanding that there may be certain, certain property owners trying to somehow evict certain restaurants in order to therefore install a drive-through instead. And so this is a discussion that we need to, I think it's important that we have, and we could investigate that further. But, but I just think that it should be agenditized so we can have a discussion and find out because we don't want to, we don't want to be, I mean, the capital of drive-throughs, the capital of drive-through restaurants where we have restaurants like Los Seals and Lazy Dog and such, we have so many great restaurants in our city, like BJ's Restaurants, that I would hate that to see property owners trying to raise rent at a ridiculous rate just to try to get a major drive-through establishment onto their lot. And so it just allows us a discussion since it's going to. And so it just allows us a discussion since it's going to, this proposal is going to move forward regardless because it's part of the code update, which will be sent to the city council to, when the code update's completed, the city council will vote on the code update. So what I'm seeing is, we can, let's have a discussion on the matter so we can see if there's a need or not a need to implement this policy.
I guess what you're trying to say is that there's a lesser and less C issues and we're trying to regulate that. But then at the same time, are we looking at all the drive-throughs in West Covina or we're looking at a particular area? Because West Covina.
Yeah, so that's, that's a discussion.
And that's a big.
Yeah, so you brought a great question and that was brought up in the, in the committee.
Do we even have a problems to even brought that?
Yeah, so there is, there is, there is.
Excuse me, Commissioner, sorry. If we can get a consensus and we can bring this item before the planning commission and an agendaized planning commission meeting, and then we can have this kind of discussion.
Yes. So I'm just recommending this based upon the most recent committee meeting that I was part of. So hopefully, we could just have a discussion about it at our next meeting.
I don't believe a vote is required for this. I think it's just direction of a commissioner. And it'll be put on the agenda and then they can act or not act.
Correct.
At the next meeting.
Yes. Yep. So, yeah.
All right. Any other commissioner reports or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Development Director's report.
Good evening again. Yes, we have a couple events coming up. Obviously Thursday is Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving holiday, or holiday weekend, which also brings us to Black Friday and Small Business Saturday. So the city is doing a Small Business Saturday event where participating businesses are being promoted on our website and our social media, our social media. So we hope that our residents do shop local and do shop small. It helps support our local businesses and it helps keep sales tax local. So I encourage everyone to shop locally this Saturday and always. We also have a couple events coming up on Friday, December 2nd at 6 o'clock here at City Hall. We have our second annual Let It Snow in West Covina, where we actually have snow here at City Hall, so you can make snowballs and play with friends and family. We encourage everyone to attend and I think there's hot cocoa and there's an ice skating rink. It's one of those without ice, but it's, you know, fun activities for the family.
Day so.
Friday, December 2nd. And then we also have the annual Children's Christmas Parade in Santa Village. That's in partnership with the Quanis Club. It's Saturday, December 10th at 9:00 a.m. And so that's a parade for the kids to enjoy. And Santa will be there. Other than that, I think we just have a couple council action updates. The housing element was approved and submitted to the state at the last city council meeting, as well as a first hearing for the mixed-use overlay zone. And so that second hearing will be at the December 6 council meeting. And I think that's all the items I have for you this evening.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none and seeing as we have no further business to conduct, this meeting is adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.